Call the April fifteenth, twenty twenty four, Goshen Board of Education meeting to order at six thirty P M. Mr. Schinkel, can you please call the roll?
Mr. West?
Yes.
This is Marky.
Here.
Pat Rocky.
Here.
Ms. Herrera, here. This is Gray.
Here. Do I have a motion to approve the April board meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Schinkel, can you please call the roll?
Mr. West?
Yes.
This is Marky.
Yes.
This is Pat Rocky.
Yes.
Ms. Herrera?
Yes.
This is Gray.
Yes. I'd like to call for a moment of silence as we ask for safety and peace over our school district and community. Thank you. Please stand as Spalding Elementary Principal Ashley Andrews leads us in the pledge of allegiance.
Hi, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to Principal Ashley Andrews and to introduce us to the wonderful young warriors we have here today to share a little bit about Goshen Spalding Elementary's student achievement.
First, I'd like to start off by introducing Ms. Tiffany Singleton. She can come up here. Let's do it.
Do I do this?
We were lucky enough to steal Tiffany two years ago, and she's been with us for two years. She is an intervention specialist working with our third grade students, and she is an unbelievable addition to our school. Don't look away, Sandy. She deals with some challenging friends at school and always does it with grace and patience, professionalism. Okay. And genuinely, I've just been so lucky to work with her. I feel like I have learned so much from her in the last two years. And in just the short time that she's been there, she's made such an impact on our school that she was actually voted for the Goshen Chamber Teacher of the Year from Spalding, so. That doesn't speak to the impact she's had just in short time. I don't know. So she came to me with this idea at the end of last year, and anytime a teacher is dreaming up something big, especially if it's going to have this kind of impact on our community, it's pretty hard to say no. So she came up with this, dreamed this up on her own, all the community outreach is all hers. I'll share a little bit once she gets started about how this can support her graduate, but I'd like her to be the one to shine today, so.
Well, I truly believe that this was something that was laid on my heart, and so when Ms. Andrews gave me the green light, I felt like that was my validation to just run with it. So the idea was to give a servant leadership opportunity for our youngest kids. I feel like right now, outside of sports, there's not a whole lot for kids at our age group to do, and there's not a lot of opportunities for them to take those leadership opportunities. And so that is how this idea of a servant leadership program was born. What we do is each month, I go ahead and I meet with the kids, and we learn about a leadership character trait. And then we do an act of service that enforces that skill.
So we felt like when we were kind of, well, we, I will take it no credit, she was dreaming this up, and you know, when we're building any programs at the school, we want to make sure that it aligns back to the portrait of a graduate, right? So where did this kind of fall? And I really felt like it honed in on that socially responsible and effective. Right? And that's not to say that the other three elements aren't important, but this specific group really hit those two things for us. Right, Ashley. Just work when you need them. All right. So just to kind of hone in on those two key elements, that socially responsible piece, having students be good citizens in the community, contributing in a positive way, showing empathy and the impact of the world around you. And like she said, that's not something that eight, nine, ten, eleven-year-olds often get to do and see how they're genuinely impacting the world. And that effective communicator, you're doing a great job. Effective communicators, listening to people, that actual active listening with other leaders in the group, that's not always easy when you put multiple, you say lions, right, in one room together? So that's a young age to work on that skill, truly having a true way dialogue and talking about those projects that they're passionate about. And again, communicating and fine tuning those teamwork skills is a huge piece. I mean, we know all the way up in high school, sometimes they struggle to work in groups, right? So this is a great way for them to start working on those skills young.
Now, I think I did jump a little bit ahead and just gave you guys an overview of what we do each month. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and have the kids come up, and Dakota's going to introduce the goals for our group and introduce the members of our group, and then the kids are going to talk to you about what we've done each month this year. So guys, you can come on down.
I'm going in opposite order.
Why don't we line up this way?
Goal one, to serve those near and far while reading like a warrior. Goal two, to build relationships and confidence in our students by providing opportunities to lead and serve, lead while serving positively and influencing others. So these are all the people in the group. We have Alex, Jayden, Wyatt, McKenna, Dakota, Leon, Emma, Jay, and Xander.
And now Leon's going to start talking about our first project, which was out in October.
You remember October, you had that point set compassion, that's some passion towards others. We partnered with Heartland's Food Company on a school-wide canned food drive. Spalding Elementary collected over one thousand eight hundred cans. After November, you learned about that point setting, what acts of kindness come about? During that evening in November, seven people volunteered our time for the service local families of the Williams family.
In January, we learned the importance of being viable. We entered the high school from pop tab and collecting. We relied on each other for the success of this project. Spalding collected a total of twenty-eight point four pounds of pop tabs. That's about forty-five thousand four hundred forty pop tabs. To show generosity to members of our community, we made the residents of Olandon Terrace and our P's and donated desserts for their annual Valentine's Day dinner. Kindness rocks. In our hope to inspire others to be kind and to serve, we created kindness rocks during the winter party. It is our goal that these rocks will be found among others for inspiration, shared for motivation, or left for others who've got a need to grow.
Funny reading. Beginning in February, we started reading with kindergarten students once a month. We wanted to serve as a rumor for our youngest learners and help them instill in them a love for reading.
Before we wrap up, you can see up here that we have a pretty large list for this being our first year of individuals and organizations that we partner with. Looking into the future, I would like to continue this group next year, and I want that list to grow. My first goal for next year is that we'll come partner with more organizations within the community and more members of the community. And I'm hoping that some of our larger projects will be able to benefit multiple organizations. So that's one of my goal by that partnership continuing. And finally, believe it or not, all of the projects that we've done this year have been done without any type of funds. So next year, it is my goal to maybe establish some sort of funds either through donations, fundraisers, or through grants, so that way we're not limited with what we can provide for our community.
Great job.
I asked you and Jen to help me out. I will say Tiffany sent me an email back, I think when they were midway through, and asked if she could come to a board meeting and present this, and it's like, absolutely. Outside of having teachers like her in leadership roles, why don't we do really great things? There are more than are here, so if you can help me with the names, because I tried to catch them.
Absolutely.
I'm here. We'll call them up. Jayden's here. Jayden, come on up. Jayden, you're getting, everybody's getting a certificate, and then you're getting a pin or Goshen pin for going above and beyond and doing a great job. Well done, man.
Brought with you today?
Uh, my mom.
Your mom?
Thanks for coming, mom. Alex? Who'd you bring with you tonight?
My father.
Your father. Wyatt? Certificate? Pin? Turn around to tell us who you brought.
I brought my dad, my mom, and my two brothers.
All right. McKenna? Certificate? Pin? And then spin around and tell us who you brought.
My mom and my sister.
Dakota? You can spin around and tell us who you brought.
I brought my mom and my brother.
Thank you for coming. Dan? Yeah, I see one for you from there. You're going above and beyond.
Thank you.
So I just want to thank all of you for coming tonight. If I'm totally honest, this is the highlight of my board meeting right here. Love to see our little warriors and honestly, our adult warriors and the things that they're leading in our school district. You guys are all doing a fabulous job and keep up the great work. You're welcome to stay for our entire meeting if you'd like, or you're welcome to exit, because I know many of you probably have sports and other things that you're doing. So feel free to stay or exit at this time.
Thank you guys so much for coming out.
Thank you. I know you heard enough from me Saturday, so I'll have something to hear this time.
All right. So our next agenda item was policy review with our attorney. Unfortunately, we got a notification today that they are sick and unable to be here. But we are going to be following up and asking for a special meeting with them as reviewing our policy and the procedures that go along with policy are important. So I asked the table this item. Old business. Moving on to old business, Mr. Bailey, can you please share with us updates on facilities?
All right, so I just, I'm gonna, we spent a lot of time on this on Saturday, but I felt like it was important to listen, kind of review the options that we discussed as a board, some of the things we looked at, and then kind of what we heard, so that I make sure that I got the recap of the direction we were looking at. So just a reminder, obviously, the ballot issue was not successful in Claremont County. We had about a twenty-seven percent turnout and did not win a precinct. But with that being said, and then in Morton County and Harlan Township, similar, not as big of a turnout there, but not as many voters, but still a very similar percentage. I do, we went over this, and I, you know, any time you go through this, you want to look and see where there are trends. And statewide, the results were a twenty-two percent turnout. And for any additional school dollars, there was about a sixteen point six percent approval. For renewal, there was seventy percent. The historic rates on new are thirty-five point seven and ninety-one point three. So with that said, you know, I think looking at November, we talked a little bit about some of the hurdles of November, but also looking at historical data. What we discussed and what you guys, you know, conveyed is that we're committed to providing a quality education. It's at what cost and what our community's wanting to pay. We're committed to finding a way forward, but we also have to recognize, and I think, you know, if we were to survey, I think I'm going to get, I think we're going to know some of the responses. And one of those being, we recognize that rising costs, property tax valuations, and inflation have made it expensive for many households on fixed incomes. We also have to understand the rising costs, we're not immune to them here at the school district level. But, you know, we have to educate, and the cost of construction continues to go up. So with that said, we reviewed three options, and I'm going to go through those tonight, not in detail, not the action step piece, just kind of where we came. The first option we looked at was examining the same phase plan that we had with construction inflation and looking at a November twenty-four or May twenty-five ballot request. The second option we looked at was examine a similar Phase One plan with a locally funded component. The third was pause ballot requests and start to find short-term solutions to address the growth in the community while continuing to find the long-term solution. I also gave you a quick update, and that, you know, not to go, I said this is not a golden parachute by any means. But every time we call the Ohio Facility Commission at the state level, we called them in two thousand nineteen, we called them in two thousand twenty, probably not in twenty-one because COVID and stuff, called them in twenty-two, and we made a return call to them prior to this. And then Todd and I called them on Monday of last week, and I'm not sure if it was talking to the right person or saying the right thing. But there is some revised code out there for OFCC, because you have to remember, we're at number one hundred and four right now to be considered for state dollars in the list. Six hundred and ten school districts, they look at it by evaluation. Our nineteen ninety-nine issue was an OFCC project, so really, we were down the list. And we're going to explore this quite a bit more, but it seems in revised code, there is an option for districts that are experiencing large growth in student population, that if we reach one hundred and fifteen percent of our nineteen ninety-nine master facilities plan that we did with them when we did this building and the updates for three consecutive years, we could be considered for state dogs. Knowing that, just doing the quick math, I'm not the math guy, but that's about thirty-two hundred kids. So with our master facilities plan being at twenty-eight sixty, get to about thirty-two hundred. Twenty-eight sixty is about where we sit right now. And, you know, so looking at four hundred kids are better. It'll be a space issue, but that is an option. It's not an immediate. It's not today. We get, and if we hit thirty-two hundred next year, we got three years before we're really pushing through that piece up. Start communicating with them, year one, we reach that. And I'm going to get a ton more details as we go through this, but the person we talked to was able to say it is an option, but the expert for that is still to come, so we're going to walk through that. That was part of our discussion.
Can you give me a thirty thousand foot view of the OFCC? Like, what is all involved in as far as, is there spin requirements? Is there a breakdown? How does that work?
I got to be honest with you, I've not been up through an OFCC from start to finish. But they come down, look at your facility needs, look at your growth needs, look at your population, look at your enrollment studies, and kind of look at how much we would need for it. I don't know if they do it, Corey, for twenty-five-year master facility plan, or they do it for a thirty-year. Most issues that they do, you see them at thirty years. So they probably look at it and say, and I'm not the expert, but it kind of starts with the planning of looking at it.
With that said, we would still have to put something on the ballot to get voted on, is that true?
Correct, so, and that side of it, good question.
Similar to our.
Well, so, for those listening and those in the audience, the 1999 was 80/20. So it was a $30 million project with 20% of that coming from district residents. They have to pass bond, we have, still have to pass bond.
Okay.
Okay. Will our demographics be the same? I'm not sure. Obviously, it's evaluation and as Goshen's valuation grows, the way anything's done at the state level, residents are expected to pay this, state will pay this, I don't know where that's at. I doubt that it would be 80/20. I'd guess five years from now, closer to 70/30. But again, I don't know what their criteria would be, but I would say a large, large chunk of that would be state provided.
Right, right. Similar to the state.
Correct.
And you can't build larger than what they say.
Right, right.
Unless you want to fund. Here, we want to build larger, and they're like, you want our money, you're going to, this is the biggest you can build. Unless you, what if you fund that? Can you do that? No, you still have to, like, we couldn't have ran like a larger bond issue back then to make the high school bigger than it was because the state said, you know, we're funding these. Unfortunately.
Again, there's a ton of details going on that. We're years out, a few years out from really being able to even investigate it if things change by then. But I wanted to go through that. So what I heard from you guys as we talked was, option one was a no from all. It was not a no starter. Option two feels like a Band-Aid, but needs to be examined a little bit. Board prefers option three at this time, but would like to investigate the following items as we look at that. A budgetary plan, examine numbers for costs for things that we can do on campus, moving grade levels, moving board office, other proposed changes in cost modulars, build some of what we need from our general fund, look at the financial implications of that, examine OFCC opportunity. And then the second one, examine impacts of reducing or removing open enrollment. How does the impact, how does that impact our current building and our future budget as we look at that? So, you know, with that said, I kind of took those and said, okay, what's this year, what's next year look like? Right now, I would ask that, we got to finish this year strong. We got kids that are in their, their only first grade year, their only senior year, and we've got a lot coming up in April and May to get us to that endpoint with kids graduating, kids transitioning district, transitioning buildings. But I would like to gather the facilities committee and steering committee to get their input and share with them some of this. And then take a little time here to gather the information requested on the impact of open enrollment to our district's finances over the next two to three years.
Real quick, on that note, we discussed staff children at Saturday, but also if you could pull it together, along with the bus drivers, that may not be in our district as well that we allow.
We do have some, yeah.
Yeah, so I'd like to know that number as well and see, see how that compares to what that would mean as well.
Yep. Start to gather that, absolutely. And then for next school year, continue to monitor the impact of growth, open enrollment, and other impacts on class sizes. Start to look at these short-term solutions. Examine modulars, movement of grade levels on campus, examine space off-campus for the board office. We take out a large chunk of real estate. I love being here on campus. I don't know if we can find another spot or do something different, but we take up a big chunk that Mark Cook could be using for educational space. Examine the removal of programs, I did say I'll work for my car if you need me to. But examine the removal of programs to provide core academic space. I think as we see growth come in, we've got some very specialized programs that are incredible for our kids, but if it comes down to space for a core academic, you might have to look at that. And then with all of that said, what are the impacts on academics and on our operating expenses? Because all of those will have impacts, I'm not going to say positively, probably academically, because that is probably, you know, larger class sizes and things like that do impact some of our academic delivery. And then what expenses are there with shifting grade levels on campus or moving board office off, whatever it might be, there's going to be some operating expenses. And then obviously, we do this, I feel like it's every day, but continue to monitor enrollment, home sales, property tax reform, that's such an unknown to us right now. We, we knew that back in October when we started these conversations, that they were talking about the evaluation, but there was a lot of conversation at the state level that it was either going to be phased in or reduced for elderly or reduced for, from an economically disadvantaged standpoint. That's still, there's still two bills up there that they're looking at from the House and Senate side that could impact property tax reform here on our residents. Not going to change the outcome of March, but, you know, it may change what's coming to us from a school district standpoint, from a budgetary standpoint. And then obviously, look at the township requests and the continued development impacts that that has. And then throughout the year, I think we need to discuss major items of emphasis moving forward that we need to better communicate. We talked about, you know, knowing where our, our community's mentality comes from. I really think that is, what do we need to be communicating and how? And what are we not? If it's just, I don't want any more taxes, understand that, but really need to be able to tell the story as we move for a future request. So that was it for those two years, thoughts?
I would just say on that note, and I think it's fantastic point about community, not only seeing what they say, but also really taking that to heart, really sitting back and if that forces us to make tough decisions, you know, we do that. But we really have to listen to what the community is saying, you know, and, and really work around that or work within that, I think.
So I have to step in here though. I agree with that to a point because as a Board of Education, our number one role is to do what's best for our kids here in the district, right? It's not necessarily to do what's best for every taxpayer. If you look at how many people actually voted, it's a small portion of our entire community. And I do agree that we have to listen to our parents and, and, you know, our community as a whole. But in general, I think every decision that we ever have to make is to do what's best for the kids in our district.
Yeah, maybe I'll say it differently then. So we have to listen to the community and then we have to gear that towards what's best for kids. You can't not listen to the community. Right, right, but I'm saying you can't, so we listen to what they say, we work within those bounds, and then we do with what we've got with what's best for the kids. Because that's going to be the number one priority, obviously.
The most difficult thing for any school district is probably about 20% of our voting population touches this campus and knows what's going on. It's getting to the other 80% or, you know, and I'll say it, I only need 50% to win. So getting to another 30% and being able to understand that, because there is a portion that no matter what we say, what we do is, you know, it's not supported. I'd like to get as many as we can, know that we opened that up, you know, committee through the time to hear people. I think that's the key thing is, where are we going to get that information at? What type of survey can we do? What type of community forums can we do to get people out and be able to talk through those things? So, you know, it's, it's the avenues to get to people and I think it'll take a little time to do that. But I think that side of it is, yes, we got to be willing to listen and then be able to, you know, take that information and look at how we move forward with it. So, and I think that's that bottom piece is just, we got to discuss and listen. But we got to have multiple ways to do that. Because not everybody, we're not going to reach everybody in the same way, but I would just urge people to come out and talk, come out and listen. I'll come into the house and sit down and talk, it doesn't matter how we do it. If you've got concerns, I'm all for it, so we'll, and I, and I know the board is as well, so we'll listen. So that is facilities update at this point. As I said, you kind of saw two years' worth of, I want to finish this year strong as superintendent too. I don't think anything we do in the next month is impacting our two to three-year, how we're going to get to that point. But we've got a lot to consider and a lot of things that are going to, you know, impact. You know, I would say I'm looking at next year, how do we make it the best first grade year for those new kids, for those kindergartners? How do we make the best senior year all the way through? And that's what I'm going to challenge my team as we go through with this to get done. So, thank you guys for continued input.
Mrs. Scherzinger, do we have anyone sign up for public participation?
We do, we have two people to sign up for public participation.
So I'm going to read a little blurb just so you know, I think it's up there. But each person addressing the board will give his or her name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person will be allotted two minutes until the total time of 30 minutes is used. During that period, no person may speak twice until all who desire to speak have had the opportunity to do so. Persons desiring more time should follow the procedure of the board to be placed on a regular agenda. The period of public participation may be extended by a vote of the majority of the Board of Education. As a board, we listen and take notes. All subject matters that require follow-up, someone from the board or administration will follow up on an outcome of what is shared today. So first, Mr. Rochelle, you're up first.
I need like extra couple of seconds off the table.
Okay. I turned the mic off, but I think.
I promise I have to look up because I may cry and I apologize. So I have to, alright, so my name is Travis Rishel and I live at 4029 Oakland Hills Drive. And I just want to say a couple of words. So first of all, ladies and gentlemen, the Goshen School Board, esteemed members of the Goshen School District and dedicated Goshen community members, good evening and thank you for welcoming me today. I am here to express our profound gratitude for the unwavering support you have shown to our daughter Tegan, who's also present today, and to our entire family during our recent medical crisis. When faced with adversity, the true character of a community is revealed. And what we have experienced has been nothing short of extraordinary. The compassionate actions from our school district, the thoughtful gestures from our community, and the endless support that you have extended to us are the reasons we are able to stand here today and hopeful for a full recovery. To the teachers and staff of the Goshen Middle School, who only adapted to Tegan's needs, but also provided the constant flow of encouragement to her classmates, classmates, excuse me, your dedication did not go unnoticed. You've shown that in our district, education is not only just about books and grades, but also about the nurturing of the hearts and minds of all the children. To the school board, thank you for your leadership. Yes, thank you for during these challenging times and continue, and well wishes to the continuance of prioritizing the well-being of students and their families. Your decisions and actions have reinforced our trust and confidence in the community's education system, as echoed by Mr. Bailey's presentation. And to the entire Goshen community, Mr. Tyler, Mr. Tox, and anybody else who may be listening, we are just grateful for the outpouring of love that came through in countless ways, from the meals and messages of hope, to the fundraisers and volunteers. You've shown that the community is not just about proximity, about people coming together to uplift one another in times of need. Special thanks must be extended to those who organize community events, those who quietly lend a hand, and everyone who believed in Tegan's strength and fought alongside her, excuse me. As Tegan continues on her journey to recovery, please know that your support has been a beacon of light during our darkest times. It has taught, it has taught us the true meaning of community and resilience, and for that, we are eternally grateful. Thank you, the Goshen School Board, the Goshen School District members who are here and who are not here. We are truly blessed to be part of this compassionate, courageous, and caring community. Thank you very much.
I have to say, there's only a handful of goosebump moments, as I say in education. You only get so many goosebumps, but thank you for the goosebumps tonight. I mean, going above and beyond for everything you did, you at least got to do that.
Thank you for coming and sharing that. It means a lot and, you know, this was a few months ago. We're taking a moment of silence to think about you and hope for the best for you, Tegan. We never stop believing in, so good to see you sitting here with us tonight.
Proud of you and your family and also Dad, yes, proud of this community because it is, it is truly extraordinary, there's no doubt.
You know, I would say, you know, on a personal note, you know, being through, you know, stuff like that in this community, you know, there's no better place to be than this place right here. And then the continuing support, the love, you know, the friendships that you build, you know, you don't get that everywhere else. So, you know, it's so cool, you know, I know you didn't really want to eat dinner with me the other night, but I appreciate it. But, you know, it's really cool to see you, you know, back on the volleyball court and, you know, hanging out with friends and getting to go places as you get stronger. You're really an inspiration to me and to a lot of folks that you may not know, so good job.
Welcome back, Tegan. Do we have anyone else on?
No.
Okay, so moving on. Moving on to new business B, financials. Do we have a motion to approve new business B, financials 1 through 10?
So moved.
Bill? Lisa? Do we have any discussions related to new business B, financials 1 through 10?
Todd, can you just, I thought, sorry. Todd, can you touch on the, the financial report, last this month's financial report? Just kind of give an update on where that's at?
Yeah, so it's on the, our cash summary report is over there.
Uh, just, yeah, yeah, cash, sorry, yes.
Okay, if you look on there, I mean, our general fund balance is really, as we stated, tied into our five-year forecast. Our forecast for this year looks pretty good. It's kind of like the weather, you know, we're getting closer to midday, you know, so our June 30th year end, so we're looking pretty good. We still have our real estate tax settlement to come in for both Claremont and Gordon Counties. I don't know what the lay is there. We get another, our income tax will come in for this first quarter of the year in April, so we'll see how that's kind of tracking. That'll be kind of an interesting deal. And of course, this year, all of our SRR funds for the district that we got need to be spent. So looking at next year's budget, we're going to be, you know, kind of looking at how we're going to roll over those type of items into the, into the fund and we'll be looking in April really and, and May to put that all together for you guys. But right now, it's looking pretty good.
Any other discussion? Mr. Schinkel, can you please call the roll?
This is Warky.
Yes.
This is Pep Rocky.
Yes.
Mr. Herrera?
Yes.
This is Gray.
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Right, moving on to new business personnel C, 1 through 9. Do we have a motion to approve new business C personnel 1 through 9?
So moved.
Bill was a second.
Thank you, Bill.
Do we have any discussion related to new business C personnel 1 through 9? Mr. Schinkel, can you please call the roll?
This is Pep Rocky.
Yes.
Mr. Herrera?
Yes.
This is Gray.
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
This is Warky.
Yes.
Okay, moving on, new business athletic personnel D, 1 through 6. As noted, Corey, you unfortunately have not permitted to vote on this due to conflict of interest of your official athletic personnel volunteer status. And do we have a motion to approve new business B athletic personnel 1 through 6?
So moved. Second.
And Lisa? Do we have discussion related to new business B athletic personnel 1 through 6? Mr. Schinkel, can you call the roll?
Mr. Herrera?
Yes.
This is Gray.
Yes.
Mr. West?
Stay.
This is Warky.
Yes.
This is Pep Rocky.
Yes.
Moving on, new business personnel E, certified substitute. Again, Corey, due to your relationship by a school employee, conflict of interest, you should not, you should stay from this section. Do we have a motion to approve new business E personnel certified substitute?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any discussion related to this item?
Which one is this, I'm sorry?
This is E.
Substitute.
Okay, thank you.
Good to have a good list up. Hopefully there are enough.
Mr. Schinkel, shall we please call the roll?
This is Gray.
Yes.
Mr. West?
Stay.
This is Warky.
Yes.
This is Pep Rocky.
Yes.
Mr. Herrera?
Yes.
Moving on to new business F personnel, Bill, this section. As your relationship with a school employee, in conflict of interest, you should stay from this section as well. Do we have a motion to approve new business F personnel items, I mean, personnel items 1 through 3?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second by Corey. Do we have any discussion related to new business F personnel 1 through 3? Mr. Schinkel, can you please call the roll?
I got to say, sorry, sorry. Health aid extended time, two days, is that, that's for, just to wrap stuff up at the.
Open the clinic, close the clinic, so you say a day after the day before.
Okay, thank you.
Personal records, yes. Any other discussion? Mr. Schinkel, can you please call the roll?
Mr. West?
Yes.
This is Warky.
Yes.
This is Pep Rocky.
Yes.
Mr. Herrera?
Spain.
This is Gray.
This is Gray.
Yes. Right. New business G miscellaneous motions. Everything from Goshen tuition-based public preschool, school fees, school lunch, student handbook, and donations. Do we have a motion to approve new business G miscellaneous items one through five?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Melissa. Do we have any discussion related to new business D?
Can we just touch on, touch on it just a little bit, just to let folks know that no- nothing has changed from last year to this year, correct?
Correct. We increased no school fees, no lunch fees, or preschool, pre- tuition. Nothing changed, thank you.
Just to thank you.
For the donations.
Yes.
That's very, very, uh, very, very.
Great.
Yes.
And as always, we'll give a thank you out to them.
Yes.
Probably already, basketball.
Level expressed.
Are you there? Thank you. All right.
Good folks.
Mr. Shinko, can you please call the roll?
This is Warky.
Yes.
This is Pat Rocky.
Yes.
Mr. Herrera, yes.
This is Gray.
Yes.
Mr. West, yes.
All right, new business H, the policies reviewed last month, do we, last month, do we have a motion to approve new business H policy motion?
So moved.
Lisa, do we have a second?
Second.
Lisa, do we have any discussion related to new business H?
Do we have the highlights of what changed on those policies? Do we have the highlights?
Yeah, um, the expense reimbursements was, uh, the only, the only thing that really changed there was when we have staff go out, increase the breakfast, lunch, and dinner, review the daily. Piece of that, we haven't changed that in quite a long time. We did, we surveyed local communities and kind of went with the median, so we didn't go with the high, we didn't go with the low, just kind of went with the average. And I-
It was ten, twenty-five, right?
Yeah, I think it was a total of, uh-
We're ten, ten, four. If you guys want exactly.
I have it up here.
Went to fifteen nineteen thirty-four. Sixty-eight dollars a day from forty dollars a day. I don't think it's, uh-
Would that be effective now, or when would be the effective date of that?
After we pass the policy, the Treasury Department is prepared to change our travel packet for staff, so we're going to that category today, yeah. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Shinko, can you please call the roll?
This is Pat Rocky.
Yes.
Mr. Herrera, yes.
This is Gray.
Yes.
Mr. West.
Yes.
This is Warky.
Yes.
Moving on to new business I, Board of Education reports. Kind of mixed it up a little. Melissa, do you have any reports for finance committee, facilities committee, or OSBA student achievement?
I do not have any report today.
Thank you. Bill?
First, I'd like to recognize, we have a couple of students that are on the automated manufacturing technology competition. They got first place in state, qualified for nationals in Atlanta. Michael Warren and Carson Sizemore, part of the group, Live Oaks program. It's the Power Skills USA competition. So it's great achievement there. Second, listed down the next section there is our graduation dates. So I don't know when we want to, we should probably-
I would cover it.
Yeah, I'm gonna cover that in my, my report. So I'll get that, because that's my report, okay.
Thanks for getting this, Bill.
Sure. And also, our programs at Great Oaks keep growing and growing and growing and filling up quicker and quicker and quicker every year, right? He gave us a list last week's meeting of, uh, all the programs that are full. I could pass it out, you can take them out if you want. There's a few that, there's a few openings remaining. It's like one, uh, one program at Live Oaks, or three programs at Live Oaks, there's some openings remaining. Two programs at Scarlet Oaks and, uh, five programs at Laurel Oaks. But we expand those also, and we asked for the grant that we received from Dewine's, you know, the money set aside for curate education. So they started, uh, the process of expanding programs for their, their welding, their law enforcement, and also that they're gonna have a program here for automotive program for battery electric vehicles. It's actually, you're beyond a plan we built up near that area. So that's in the planning stages now for graduating on the buildings. And other programs, they expand where space needs. And the ribbon cutting, is that after the last meeting?
It was after.
Yeah, yeah, I remember. That was a great event.
It was amazing.
That was great, yeah, that was, and it's one of our audience numbers out there, Dylan was out there too. But, uh, yeah, that was, uh, it was great to see what, what the, all the opportunities offered to these kids nowadays. Matter of fact, on Channel Twelve tonight, they were at, uh, at the Oaks, they're, uh, they're, they're higher, higher program out there. So my kids are, you know, we're going to college, we're in the workforce, and all the opportunities offered to them. It's great.
Are some of these programs like a lottery because they're so competitive, or is there-
They are, yeah.
So there's, I guess, I don't want to be selfish, but is there anything we can do to make sure, like, to get more Goshen kids in because we have great students and make sure our kids get in more, or is it-
I think that's why, Melissa, I agree. But it is lottery, and I, I mean, there's a, a lot of things we're doing here to try to supplant that if they can't get there, right? We're still trying to give those opportunities to get the hands-on pieces with some of these partnerships that we've established. It's not exactly the CTE piece as far as lab stuff goes, but we do have a lot of kids that are getting internships that, you know, if they're, they're still interested in, some of them, you know, it's, I don't want to go, some of them, it's, couldn't get into the program I wanted, I'm not gonna select a second. But it is great that, you know, our kids have really Scarlet and Laurel and Live to choose for those programs and try to get in. So I know that's the big conversation starting freshman year, you're building your resume. And it is a little bit of, of that side of it, so make sure you've got freshman sophomore year tackled so that when you go to apply for that junior year at the Oaks, it's, you're not behind in anything.
Okay.
We also have the satellite programs here that we-
Correct, the satellite programs here, and businesses coming in, yeah, yep, yep.
It's great. That's all I have.
Thank you, Bill. Lisa, just later?
Yes, so I have a few updates, actually. So, uh, first, there is a new House bill, number four eighty-five, that's been introduced. And, uh, that would make changes regarding school internet safety policy and instruction on the effects of social media in public schools. So, yes, but, I mean, it's brand new, just introduced. So the House Primary and Secondary Education Committee, they had a second hearing on Senate Bill one sixty-eight, and that's supported by OSBA, Buckeye Association of School Administrators, and other, uh, uh, education associations. And two of the key things that I think with that would be that, number one, it allows school districts to develop and use their own framework for teacher evaluation instead of using a framework that's been developed by the State Board of Education. And also, it eliminates seniority as a preference when making reductions in non-teaching staff positions, if those are needed. And then, um, my last one is Governor Dewine had his State of the State speech the week of April eighth, and a lot of it was focused on children and, um, education. And he talked about creating new programs, such as apprenticeships, career planning, adding career planning to high school graduation requirements, expanding funding for career tech education so that more students have the opportunities to attend because, as Bill just mentioned, it's highly competitive to get into. Creating more school-based healthcare centers, which we're on the cutting edge of that. And finally, he asked the legislator to require districts to adopt a cell phone usage policy to help issue, to help the issue of disruptions in classrooms. So, yes, those are all things that we have touched on, um, in the past, and it, it seems like he has an ear to our meetings.
What was the Senate Bill number again?
Oh, sure.
One sixty-eight, one sixty-eight?
Yeah, Senate Bill one sixty-eight. Yeah.
I read a bunch of those. I did not see the internet safety and school media one, but it's, uh-
Yeah, it was, yeah, I mean, it, I think it was, um, the week of the twelfth.
Yeah, that's kudos to, I mean, that's one of those ones. Our SROs go into three through eight and really have those conversations right now. They do, they do a class with kids about internet safety, social media safety, how to use it, you know, in a, in the correct manner. Some of the legalities have not, so it's great that we've got our SROs, which I know you guys approved there, the MOU with Goshen Township for next year for our SROs. They do more than just, you know, the campus safety piece. They're teaching our kids and working with them in the classroom, so.
It's good to hear, we're ahead of it in that one a little bit too, depending on what the legal language is in it.
But that's great to hear. Sure, it gets different too, when the SROs present that to the kids.
Yeah, and those two are-
Teachers, you know, you know, the lecture about something. Yeah, the SROs present it probably.
Yep, yeah.
Cory, Goshen Township?
Yeah, no, I mean, we kind of know what's going on with all the, the new builds, and, and they talked about that. You know, obviously, their fire levy, you know, didn't pass, and they talked about that, and, and, you know, unfortunately, more are leaving the force now and going elsewhere, you know, because of that, so. Cody Martin, he dropped down to part-time, a lot of them either dropped down to part-time to look elsewhere or just left. They're gonna put that back on, you know, they have to, you know, so they talked about that. And then they, they adjourned after that, I mean, it was, that was a good, you know, portion of the meeting, so.
Thank you. And then I am the Goshen Education Foundation. We're partnering with Athletic Boosters and Alumni Association for our golfing for Goshen Warriors. It's always a great event and sells out quick, so, um, if you're interested, it's gonna be July twenty-sixth. I encourage you to go on any of their Facebook pages or online to, their websites to sign up immediately if you're interested. If you don't play golf and you want to make any kind of donation, they do a lot of giveaways. It's a pretty fun event. You can sponsor holes, you can, um, sponsor all kinds of different things at that event, so, um, it's a great, or if you want to volunteer, come volunteer. But it's been a huge success, and it's a great collaborative event with our Goshen organizations. Also, just want to thank, uh, Goshen Alumni Association and Goshen Education Foundation for hosting the lovely red and gray soraya. Many of us attended, um, the PTO for another wonderful other daughter dance and all the volunteers, local businesses, organizations. That work doesn't go unnoticed and it supports our schools tremendously. Thanks to those of you who attended any of those events on behalf of the Board of Education, and always to our administrative team for showing up and caring and supporting our Warriors. I think it's huge and doesn't go unnoticed. If everybody could send, uh, an email with their report, I'd like to just make sure it gets in the records of everybody's reports. That would be great. Any questions? All right, moving on to new item J, superintendent's report.
All right, um, just quick board follow-up on, you know, Saturday was tremendous. I know we had a piece in the morning, looking to secure dates still on that. We've still texted with, uh, our facilitator and still some health, so we'll follow up with that. And I do want to thank you guys for five hours on a Saturday, and probably could have been longer, but, um, it's, it's impactful for us to be able to do that yearly, just to kind of set the tone and provide the direction of what's happened and where we're headed, so thank you. Graduation dates, which Bill talked about, they're, they're getting ready to fire up here. It's an exciting time for a lot of our kids. We do Laurel Oaks, we have two students, so those numbers in parentheses are the number of students at those Oaks programs. So two at Laurel, ten at Scarlet, and forty-two at Live. So do you guys, how do you guys want to break those up? I could, one of two things, if you want to look at your calendars, I can send you a quick survey tomorrow, just a Google form that you can click, click, click and go, or we can try to do that now. Obviously, I hope everybody's coming to the twenty-eighth.
Didn't you say this?
I did, yeah, but, all right. You did.
I'll be-
Google's not my thing, so I didn't.
I'll be out of town fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, so I won't be able to do any of those, but I will be in town on the twenty-eighth, okay?
Obviously, we're all going to the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is that, let's start with Melissa.
Yeah, I'm like, wait a second, timeout, we are all going to the twenty-eighth, correct? Okay.
That's two hundred and twenty-one right now, students.
Nice. Um, sure.
I can go to the sixteenth. Last year, I went to Laurel.
Yeah, you and I went to Laurel last year. So I planned on going to the sixteenth also because I know a few kiddos that are gonna be graduating there.
I'll be at oh-three.
Also, I'd like to, I can also, oh, wait, the fourteenth is the, is the fourteenth, the scholarship night?
I was gonna say, I've got one, there's dates here on the bottom there, senior awards, and where to celebration on the fourteenth, so we do have our senior awards that night.
So I, I give out a few scholarships at that, so I will be at the fourteenth.
I'll go with you, Bill, to Hillsboro. I know last year I had a senior, so I didn't do anything, but, so, uh, and next year I will have a senior.
On the Oaks?
Yes, the fourteen.
On the fourteen.
Yep, yeah.
So I'll look at, I'll look at my calendar for the fifteenth to see if I can go also.
I can do the fifteenth.
You can, okay.
Yeah, so I'll do the fifteenth and sixteenth.
And you and Professor go on the fifteenth?
Yeah, yep, yep.
So I think we have it all.
Thank you.
I could have, but this is for coming up, Goshen, like, come up, Goshen.
And if not, well, at least have a representative, right?
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
Well, then, I mean, I'll go, I mean, I'll be going to the graduation.
Okay, for sure.
Yeah.
Okay, so Bill, Melissa on the fourteenth. Bill and I on the fifteenth, Bill, Lisa and I on the sixteenth. And then everyone. Everyone questions.
And yes, those two other dates I put on there, the senior awards, that's in the evening, that's scholarships. I'll, I'll, we'll be putting dates or times out with this for you guys. I just wanted to show you that there's a couple of big landmarks coming up. Where to celebration, you know, that's the awesome day where Stephanie has them sign if they're going to college, career, military, they all do a kind of a signing of what their next step is. Well, I'm sorry, the senior signing. So we're gonna be working on that with local business partners that have kids signing a little bit for a possible job. So it's all kind of coming to creation, but I'll put some details out for you on that. Just wanted you to have a couple of placeholders.
So senior signings, like, likely during the day, like, morning, right? Eight to ten AM or something like that?
Usually, yeah.
Okay, got it.
Just a reminder, we've got, uh, a business advisory committee coming up on Wednesday at eight. Pat sent out the agenda for that today. I did want to say that our Business Advisory Council is gonna be honored at the Southwest Ohio Tech Prep Awards on Friday, May tenth, um, for really our work and workforce development with our, within our region. So let's, you know, getting that three-star BAC is a lone district, not in a big conglomerate. They are going to collaborate, um, they are going to award, um, our, our district that award at May tenth, so we're more involved on that.
So our reps for that are Cory and Lisa.
Correct. That meeting's online that he sent out today, correct?
It can be online or you can be in person, yeah, either one, yeah. And then Teresa.
I'm excited. This is my first annual compliance of food service report. She bring samples? I did not bring samples. We didn't talk about, I could have you do that sometime. Like, having, took it, because they've been doing a lot of really cool things for adjusting. Yes, I heard, so. I think the iced coffee is a big hit with the students for sure, but, um, we require- I also do annual report on our food service, and Troy actually met with Brooke, and then we kind of went over this, um, report together. We are in compliance with all state requirements for food service. We have a health wellness committee that met last year when Brooke was newly hired, so it was a transition of time between our new, um, food service and our old food service, so they kind of be on the same page and kind of pass that baton on. We have a food and beverage policy and a wellness plan that was adopted a couple of years ago. We do follow that information. And so I just included in here some of the details of that as far as, like, what's a serving size for low-fat milk and low-calorie beverages we have available, and then some school competitive food guidelines that are in. And low-calorie beverages we have available, and then some school competitive food guidelines that are in, in that report as well.
So the big one on that is Brooke has her necessary credentials, and she stays up on that, so we don't have to deal with the beans. She does an incredible job, she's been a great addition, so.
She really is.
But that is annual, just update you guys that we are in compliance with what we get to do as far as food sales.
And Melissa did a joke around that, but we did ask Brooke some time to come and just kind of give you a little update about the changes she's making in food service.
That's great.
Especially the high school kids are pretty excited about that.
That would be great.
I will say one thing, but she is really, really good. I did, had an issue with someone using Nolan's code, I don't know if they stole it or looked behind him, or swears he didn't give it to me, I don't know.
Or he gave it.
But, but what she did is she called right back and, and implemented, when they enter their code, a picture comes up, so now the cashier can verify that that's.
We had that at all the other buildings, I just don't think it transitioned over to high school.
I was gonna say, that's been like that forever.
Okay, high school then. I think it was just a click of a button that we hadn't clicked. It helps at the high school level, they're a little bit more identifiable at the high school level than a cute little girl on ponytail. They're both the same as the next little girl.
So she's very, yeah.
Just give her a call, there's a.
She is, she is. All right, I get the excitement, I don't know if he dug into my presentation or not, but I think you guys know that Mr. Schinkel, seventh year in a row under a state award for his department, Dean Schmidt and Jason Stevens sent down a proclamation for Mr. Schinkel here on behalf of the Ohio 135th, 135th General Assembly, so nice little plaque here.
Wow.
I would say it's.
You did pretty good high neck, I didn't know.
We have a G hand for him?
Can I, can I, can we do like they do, what is that, airport, let's take this back off?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I actually, honestly, this is incredible, right? Seven straight year in a row to win an award for, from the others, clean audits, your team. And I know you don't claim everything because you have an amazing team, but you're doing an amazing job to lead that team, and your entire staff is absolutely incredible.
They were great, like, all that, you know, those are the three ladies there, and I mean, they're, you know, growing up and being in sports, you know, when you have teamwork and commitment, and everyone's kind of focused on the same target and goals, and that's what we try to do, and you know, really, if you look up there, three of us live in Goshen, and that's what we expect. I mean, to me, if we don't get it, I'm, I'm upset with myself that we didn't get an award for whatever, you know, the issue might be, whether it's big or small, we want to get it, and that's just what we expect. I mean, it's not, you know, I know we put it in our G news this last time, but it's typically not one of those things where we say, like, hey, look at us, we got this, because that is our expectation. And you guys, I mean, our community deserves that, so, I mean, it's always nice when you get, you know, recognized, but I mean, it's, you know, because there is a lot of hard work that goes into it, so. Very excited, I appreciate that, I've never gotten this one ever, so.
And can we make sure the three of them get G's tomorrow?
Yes, we on time here.
Yes, thank you.
You know, like, like you said that time, you like, and that's what you expect, but I had no idea. Like, I thought this is when, like, this is how a school board and a school is run until you go to BLT and OSBA and hear what other districts go through and how, I know this is accuracy, but the superintendent and the treasurer don't even speak to each other, they hate each other, they work in the same building, they have opposite goals. I'm like, you have got to be kidding me, ours eat lunch at Markick Elementary together every day, and they talk about this stuff, you know? And so, I mean, I, it's amazing, like, you know, obviously, you can't run an effective school district if your people don't communicate, so, yes, we are very fortunate.
Something that Charlie always says is he takes care of it like it's his own personal checkbook, and I think that goes to show that he really cares about every dollar in our school system and where it's going, and I know we're thankful for that.
Well, thank you to all you guys for your support, because I mean, I really do appreciate it. I know you guys trust me with a lot of stuff and ask some questions, and me be, and, you know, I'll say it one last time, it's teamwork, so.
Good job, Todd.
Thank you.
And you.
Yes. So I just changed this PowerPoint when I came in, it's, it's 6:00 to sit down and get going, because this email just came out on, at 2:00. We were awarded, and this goes back to that grant piece and searching stuff out, we were awarded $61,500 in the latest round of teen driver scholarships. This, we, we signed up, we have a partner, and part of that grant was we have to have a partner, and they provide, you know, the, the cost of it's right, like, 600 bucks, I think, for a student to get the online or in-class training and the driver training. Just estimating, we're gonna be able to provide 102 students between the next two years, the opportunity to get that at no cost. Want to talk about removing and burying kids of getting their driver's license, and 600 bucks is sometimes not easy to come by, but there's gonna be a process. So it is, it's huge, and we're proud. Again, this is the grant pieces that we try to go out and get and help kids or programs or whatever it might be, and this is just one that we found out today that we were awarded. So we'll, more to come on that of how kids will apply and how we do that, but essentially, we've got two years to spend that, and we have a partner that's ready to go with it, so it's just getting kids involved.
I had to put you on the spot, but I know a lot of great work goes into this. Who all worked on applying for this?
That is Pat Dubs, Brooke Ashcraft, Stephanie Walker, Mr. Schinkel from the number side, and all been to that, they did a lot of work.
Awesome.
Yes.
And then lastly, as I said up top, with Mr. Dieter's not being here, I wanted to throw out some dates. So, Mrs. Gray, I'm recommending that, that you request to schedule a special meeting next week or the following for our board's legal firm to work with the board and administrative team on policy and board protocol. So I've put some dates there, want to talk to you guys, couple, one early next week, one midweek, and then one the following week. What date, of what would work for you guys? Want to start with that Monday, go from there, or throw out the ones you know you can't do it?
So I'd like to request a special meeting. I'd like to figure out what date and time works best for all of the board to attend, this is really important.
What, what's the agenda for, do we have an agenda, we put down the agenda for that? There will be an agenda, I have them.
So it'll be a special meeting to cover basically what Mr. Dieter's was going to cover today regarding, like, policy, board protocol, how we work through, you know, policy review, making sure it's, you know, ready to be put in place and that he can defend it in a court of law. So we'll put a full, the official.
I'll have an agenda.
Agenda out, out as soon as we can.
And that's a public as well, public media.
It's a public.
Okay, so I'm good either the 22nd or the 30th. I like the 30th, myself.
Lisa, Melissa?
I can do the 30th. Yeah, yeah, that's good with everybody else.
As long as it's good with him.
I passed those dates by, okay.
Hopefully swell by then.
That's PM, correct? That's fine.
Yes, that's PM, sorry, we're not gonna. And I can do, I just threw some, I threw random times on there, honestly, just because I was doing days as I was, so you, if it's the 30th and you want to do 5:30 to 7:30, we can do that. Or we can just stick the, 6 to 8, I don't, I didn't want to.
Let me double-check the.
Presume.
So we've got a, we've got a home time against Sycamore on that day. It's at 5:00. So probably the later, 6:30 to 8:30 would be better.
Six, 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m.?
No.
I should have put PM on there, I'm more than, yeah.
Wake up about 4:00 a.m., guys.
Do you think it'll need two hours, or can we do like 7 to 8 potentially? I can always leave a little bit earlier than game.
Uh, I think if he asks for two hours, so if we're gonna do it, yes, I think so.
7 to 9 is a drive.
Yeah, that's a good number.
6:30, 6:30, 8:30, does that work on the 30?
I mean, I'll see where we're at in the game, you know, we only got two coaches, I coach first base, so we'll figure it out. If I have to show up a little late, I can do that as well. If you want to do 6:30, 8:30, that's fine. Actually, we have games those other two days too.
Let me double-check. You can cut schedule, and you know it's gonna change the time.
Yeah.
It may rain on the 30th.
It's gonna rain on that day.
We, we practiced today, and it was bright sunny, and. I had 6:30. Ballgame has been rained out there.
Last two weeks.
Oh, my gosh. 6:30, 8:30 on the 30th.
Yep.
Appreciate you working with it.
Does that work for everyone? I have a meeting that night, but I'll reschedule it.
That's all I have.
All right. Are we confirmed, everyone?
Yes.
All right, that wraps up the agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So, second.
Corey and Bill, first and second. Mr. Schinkel, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Arera? Yes. Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
This is working?
Yes.
Pep Rocky?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at 7:41 p.m.